Weeknights on MeTV. Who loves you, baby?
You shouldn't ask.
It's Kojak.
Well, it sounds like music to my ears.
On MeTV.
Look at me.
Why do we love him?
Maybe it's the way I comb my hair.
Or maybe it's his trusty right-hand man.
More bites? Cracker! Cracker. Cracker.
Kojak!
I just wanted to hear how it sounded.
Telly Savalas is Kojak.
Story of my life, baby.
Weeknights at 12:30, 11:30 Central on MeTV.
Who loves you?
Hi, I'm John Malos and welcome to Connect With Me. On this Wednesday morning, we're going to be talking politics. It's the beginning here on Connect With Me. For the next couple of weeks, we'll be talking to some of the candidates running for office. And today, Henry Perea is in our studio. He'll be talking about Measure O. It's kind of flying under the radar right now. And we'll talk about other issues and politics. Your phone calls, (265) 4331. Area code 559. Back with Henry in just a moment. And looking at my calendar, of course, this morning, I'm looking at the next couple of weeks and we're booked. We're talking politics because the election is November the 6th. So for the next few weeks or so, up until Election Day, we're going to be having some politicians come in. We'll debate the issues and talk about what's going to happen possibly on November the 6th. We'll go through all the measures, the propositions, the candidates. It certainly will be a lot of fun, but I'm sure a lot of people can't wait for the election to come and go as usual. Today, we're going to be talking about Measure O. That's going to be on the ballot. You maybe haven't heard about it, but it's kind of flying under the radar. And so you may be asking, what is Measure O all about? Let's put it up on the screen and we'll show you what Measure O is all about. If Measure O passes, the Fresno County Board of Supervisors would be able to privatize government services with only three votes instead of the four which they have now. Supporters of this measure say by privatizing services, it will save the county millions of dollars. But those who oppose say, no, no, got to leave it the way it is. Here are the supervisors in favor of Measure O. Debbie Pachigian, she is the author of this measure. Judy Case, Phil Larson. Those against, Susan Anderson and Henry Perea, who just happens to be our guest today. Henry Perea is live in our studio here. He's a member of the Fresno County Board of Supervisors, former member of the Fresno City Council. Perea is a veteran politician who's going to tell us why Measure O is not a good idea in his opinion. Now, Connect With Me tried to contact Debbie Pachigian. She's the author of this measure, Measure O. We called her office, we talked to her assistant, we got no response back. But here's what Debbie Pachigian told the Fresno Bee just recently. She said, here is a chance for voters to make a big difference on Measure O. She told the Bee that in September sometime. But she is not willing to come on here and debate the issue. She wants voters to learn about Measure O on their own. There's no debate about this issue, but I'll be talking to Henry Perea about it. I'll be the devil's advocate. I'll take the other side and see what happens. Your phone calls are important.[228.43][228.43](265) 4331. Run, 31, I should say. Back with Henry Perea in just a moment.
Ventura TV Appliance Center. We're the low-price, leading brands, reliable advice place. The Whirlpool Dream Kitchen, get yours today place. Check this out. Right now, get huge savings on select Whirlpool appliances and pay no interest when paid in full within six months. At the hometown low price, think outside the big box place. Since 1951, Ventura TV Appliance Center, we're working hard to be your place.
Oh, that's not the first time I've messed up on the air live on TV. Anyway, the number is (265) 4331. We're talking Measure O. Henry Perea is in the studio here. Hi, Henry, how are you?
Good, John. Great to be here.
Hey, it's good to see you. You're back again for the second time.
Oh, you bet.
All right. Measure O. Debbie Pachigian is the author of this measure. For the life of me, I don't know why she doesn't want to come on here and debate. What's your take on that? Why doesn't she want to debate her own issue, a measure that she authored?
You know, that's a great question. You know, I don't know. I think anytime you put something on the ballot, regardless of who it is or what the issue is, you should be ready to stand up and defend it. But it is what it is. I'm happy to be on your show to talk to your folks about what the measure is and why I think it's not a good idea.
Why is it not a good idea?
Well, I mean, if we go back to the '70s, when the county put this into place, I think it was a good idea. And if you put it in a political context, it was a majority Republican Board of Supervisors in, just as it is now. There's four Republicans on the board. And at that time, they figured that when you're going to outsource taxpayer dollars, you have to make sure that you make sure everything is right so that at the end of the day, you're not costing taxpayers more money. So they put it into effect, saying, it's not that we're against privatizing, but it needs to be four of us saying yes before we launch on that.
Why is it important to have four of you say yes as opposed to three? I mean, what's the difference?
Well, I'll give you a great example, and I think this was the wisdom of the board in the '70s when they put that four into play, to make sure that we didn't outsource dollars that would end up costing the county more money. Last year, there was an issue of privatization before our Board of Supervisors, and it was our security department. So the thought was, okay, if we outsource that to the private sector, we will save money. Well, when staff came back and gave us all of the numbers attached to the privatization, it would have cost the county taxpayers a million dollars more.
To privatize.
To privatize. And it was in black and white. And it was a two-hour debate, two and a half, maybe three-hour debate that we had on the subject. We had staff go through all the numbers, and when all the dust cleared, there were only three votes to privatize security. Now, think about if this measure was in place. It would have been privatized and it would have cost the taxpayers a million more dollars to outsource what we were doing inside. Sometimes it is cheaper to do things internally. So I think that's a check in the balance. When you have four votes, you have that extra set of eyes that has to really give that deep dive look at it before you turn the trigger and say, privatize. I mean, privatize sounds good. A lot of people like to have that notch in their political gun belt, saying, why privatize this? I privatize that. But at the end of the day, most privatization efforts do end up costing the taxpayers more money. So in this case...
Because the bottom line is money for the private companies? The bottom line is how much can we make in terms of profit?
Oh, no question. I mean, yeah, I mean, the private sector is in business not necessarily, number one, to provide service to the taxpayer, but it's to make money. And somewhere in between, they blend the two. I think a good example is the city of Fresno and their garbage privatization. I mean, when they realized that it was an internal enterprise fund and they couldn't pull the money out, that the taxpayers were paying for their garbage services, they figured out a clever way to try to get that money. Well, they did that by privatizing it. Now saying, garbage company A, we're going to charge you $2 million a year as a franchise fee for the privilege of picking up our garbage. Of course, they're going to pay that because all they're going to do is raise the rates of the ratepayers.
On the consumers.
On the consumers, which they did. And it's proven out on the commercial side of that, that they have raised the rates of those folks. And they're moving now towards residential, and you're going to see rates going up and service levels going down. That's just the way it works.
Yeah, because business wants to make profit.
Absolutely.
But what kind of privatizing are you talking about in the county? What kind of services would fall under this category?
Well, you know, I mean, everything.
Such as?
Well, let me talk about what's happening right now in privatization. You know, a lot of people may think that, well, the county's not doing anything in privatization. Right now, we outsource, we privatize $93 million of our county services to the private sector. A lot of that is occurring right now in our social services department, in our public health department, in our mental health department. So, you know, so for folks to say that, well, you know, we need to save taxpayer dollars, we are already doing that. Can we do more? I'm sure we can.
Is the county saving money by privatizing these programs that you just mentioned?
Yeah, in these cases, yes. Because I'll give you a good example. In the mental health department, when we received additional dollars maybe five years ago, new revenues, we had a decision to make. Are we going to create more county services internally and provide those mental health services to folks? Or are we going to go to the private sector? Our board made the decision to go to the private sector. We get more bang for our buck in those instances than we are, and the services are good. So we're happy with those services. But we did the four votes to make that happen. We gave it the deep dive, the good, strong look, and figured that was the best way to go to save that money.
So why does Debbie Pachigian, Judy Case, and Phil Larson want to go in this direction from the four to the three so they could privatize what other kinds of services?
Well, you know, that's a great question. I mean, the first shot they took at it last year was security services. And I think it was kind of egg on their face from the standpoint of when all the dust settled.
Security services meaning?
We have a security department in the county of Fresno. So what they do is they secure all of the county buildings. They provide some of the court security on the exterior and pretty much go with...
Sheriff's Department, I think, provides security for the courthouse though, right?
Internally.
Internally.
Yeah, internally. So when you go into the courthouse and you're screened, that's all deputy sheriffs. But on the outside, the exterior, those are our security...
Those are county employees.
Those are county employees in our security department. So I think the long and the short of it is, we looked at it, we gave it the hard financial look, unbiased numbers, and it was going to cost the taxpayers a million dollars more. So I think it's a good thing that the key of four votes to turn that key was in place.
So to privatize those security officers that work for the county to protect the outside and monitor what's going on the outside of the courthouse, it would have cost the county $1 million more to privatize that?
Correct. It would have cost more.
So it lost in a vote?
Oh, no.
Did you ever take a vote on it?
Oh, yes, we did.
And it lost?
We took a vote and it passed.
Oh, it did pass?
It passed on a three to two vote, but it didn't have the fourth vote.
Right, that's what I meant.
To finally make it happen. So I think in that case, the taxpayers should be very happy that they voted in in the 1970s that there'd be four votes to privatize that county service because it would have ended up costing them a million dollars more, which means we would have been taking money from the sheriff's department, from the district attorney's office to pay that additional million dollars.
Why somebody would want to pay an additional $1 million is beyond me. We'll get into that when we come back here. We're talking with Henry Perea, Fresno Board of Supervisors, Fresno County, that is, of course. Your phone calls, hey, the line is open.[710.73][710.73](265) 4331. Back to talk more about Measure O and what it might mean in terms of jobs. Back in a moment.
And now, The Alan Brady Show.
Hi, I'm Alan Brady. You remember me from The Alan Brady Show?
Yes, if Alan needs any help.
Shut up, Mel.
Yes, sir.
Shut up, Mel.
Shut up, Mel.
Yes, sir.
I have the best TV writers on my show. Rob Petry, Sally Rogers...
Eddie, I got it! Don't anybody move!
And Buddy Sorrell.
How you moved, I forgot it!
On The Dick Van Dyke Show here...
Alan, if you're...
Shut up, Mel. On MeTV.
Weeknights at 9:30, 8:30 Central on MeTV.
What's the matter with you? You know, all I want this Christmas is a politician, or how about a bunch of politicians that are like real human beings, okay? That's all I want. You're a real human being. You're honest. I've known you for years. You're not afraid to debate anytime, anywhere. What happened to our politicians in this day and age, Henry? They're not, they don't even seem real to me. All I want is a real human being, for a politician, someone who talks and is willing to talk about the issues.
That's why I've always told you, you should run for office.
No, no.
We'll get you on the Board of Supervisors.
I'm a real human being, I could never do that.
Well, you never know. I mean, at the end of the day, we all put on our pants one leg at a time, you know? We all mow our lawns and take care of business at home.
We take care of our families. That's what we want.
Sure, absolutely.
Politicians just seem so... You know, I don't even know what the term... I know what term is going through my head, but I better not use it. They just don't seem real. Why is that? You seem so separated from our... They almost act as if they're royalty in a way, do they not?
You know...
Some politicians, not all, not all.
I think sometimes people forget that you're just passing through. You know, the office is there and the power that's attached to the office belongs to that office. I think sometimes people right away get confused and say, no, I have the power, that belongs to me. And it's really not. We're just in transition. We're just blessed that we're passing through, you know, because the voters gave us a period of time to be there. And I think if you keep it in that perspective, I think you honor and you respect the seat. And you're more inclined to be more open, be more, you know, put your positions out there. I mean, I like to put what I think out there.
Put your platforms out there.
Put it out there.
Yeah.
And I think sometimes those in elected office will say, well, if I put my platform out there, then it'll give more people to take shots at me. Well, you know, that's okay. You know, people want to know what I think and what other elected officials think because that's why we're there.
That's the whole process.
That's the process.
Yeah. One thing I do like about this guy, I got to tell you, ladies and gentlemen, I've known this guy, Henry Perea, for a long time. Whether you agree or disagree with him, he'll always talk to you, he'll always come on a show, radio, television, newspaper. He's not afraid. He's a real guy. We've got a phone call. I hope it's a real phone call. Good morning, you're on Connect With Me with Henry Perea. How are you?
I'm fine. How are you doing today?
Good, good. What's your question?
My name is Jerry. I used to be a senior Fresno garbage man. And, you know, a lot of this stuff that goes on within the city, that department used to have, it had every year a surplus of money that the commercial garbage, the solid waste department, you know, accrued over a year. And instead of changing the city charter where they could put that money in a general fund, why did they privatize, instead of looking at other options and a way to pull that money into the, more than the $2 million that they pay, that the private sector pays to operate in the city, there was more than that surplus left over every year. Why didn't they look at options like that? And why don't they, throughout our government, when there's surplus money, change the city charter, put it up to vote to the people of the city, and allow them the opportunity to make a decision? When there's, I mean, you know, there was 10, over $10 million surplus on a given year. And they're worried about $2 million. How come they don't bring that out to the public? And, I mean, a lot of people lost their job, they're working at a lower rate. The city, it's not good for the city, the citizens of the city, because now their garbage rates are going up. And it's going to go on and do the same thing with the residential.
Right. Well, you know, Henry Perea works for the Fresno County, he's a Fresno County Board of Supervisors, but...
I know he does now.
Yeah.
He was a city council member at that time.
Yeah, you know, Jerry, you do raise a lot of good points. And I do recall when I was at the city, we had a very healthy surplus in that solid waste reserve, and there still is one. And I think one of the questions that we're going to be facing more is, you know, they're using that reserve right now to subsidize the private sector's rates to keep them low. And I don't know if that's quite proper, but...
Well, they have $28 million in the till. 16 million of that is the private on the residential side.
Residential, yeah.
Yeah, for garbage, so...
I think what we're going to be seeing, Jerry, and I don't know if it's going to be a charter vote, but I think there's going to be a lot of Prop 218 challenges as the city moves forward on the residential side. Because really, what they're going to be doing is raising taxes on the ratepayers in the city of Fresno.
And Proposition 218, I believe you're talking about that same proposition where the city cannot use that fund to put, that reserve money to put in the general fund.
Exactly, exactly. So I think what's going to be happening is, there's going to be a lot of neighborhoods that are going to be uniting and saying, okay, well, if this privatization is a good idea in the city, and maybe we need to weigh in, and we're going to weigh into the Prop 218 because there's no question our rates will be going up and as the rate is a tax, and we want to vote on it. And I think we're going to be seeing that happening quite a bit.
Getting back to Fresno County and Measure O. If Measure O does pass, and now you only need a majority vote to privatize, how many people would you guesstimate in Fresno County would lose their jobs?
Well, I guess it depends on what services they would be looking at privatizing. I mean, I know in the, just reading the local paper this week, they were talking about privatizing the public defender's office, our security department, and going after that again. There could be hundreds of people losing their jobs. And I know, I know a lot of people would be concerned about that. No question I would be. I think anytime you have folks that are making a living wage and having, you know, they have benefits for their families, I think that's what we all want, but...
Weren't they at one time talking about doing something with the DA's office as well? In addition to the public defenders? Or am I mistaken about that?
Yeah, no, I don't think the DA's office.
Okay, but mainly the public defender's office?
Well, that would be one. And then I would think they'd probably look at our support-type services operations. For example, they'd be looking at security, janitorial, building maintenance. They'd probably be looking at those types of infrastructure departments. I'm thinking, I don't know what Supervisor Pachigian and the others are...
So you're talking about hundreds and hundreds of people losing their jobs in Fresno County?
Yeah, that could be. And, you know, for a county that has an employment issue, I don't know if that's the right way to go. And I know the private sector, as we talked earlier, you know, their number one goal is to make money, and that's the way it should be. But, you know, you do that by paying folks those types of jobs a minimum wage and not providing benefits. I don't know how that benefits Fresno County with such a high unemployment rate.
All right, another phone call. Good morning, you're on with Henry Perea. How are you? Hello?
I'm good. I don't want to be on TV right now, though.
Okay, what's your question, quickly?
How do we make arrangements for someone to come on the show?
Oh, gosh. We'll have to, we'll have to talk to that young lady later on because we're talking here with Henry Perea about politics and Measure O.
Okay, thanks.
So, anyway, we're going to be back with more of our conversation with Henry in just a moment. Stay tuned.
From the pages of history and the untamed prairies of a young nation, comes one of television's and America's most memorable folk heroes.
Oh, Daniel Boone was a man, just a big man.
You're Daniel Boone?
Yep.
Fast Parker stars as the legendary Daniel Boone, with Ed Ames as his trusty sidekick, Mingo.
Pleasure, indeed.
A Kentuckian named Daniel Boone.
That's me.
Watch Daniel Boone, weekday mornings at 9, 8 Central on MeTV.
And we're back talking with Henry Perea, the Fresno County Board of Supervisors. We've got another phone call. We'll see what this one's about. Good morning, you're on Connect With Me. How are you?
Good, good, John. Just several questions to Mr. Perea. First one is that, now, if I got this right, it's going to cost a million dollars to privatize the garbage, the trash pickup? Number one. Number two is, why can't they guarantee, before they do privatize, why can't they guarantee that they will get their jobs back before they do this contract? That the employees will get the job that they started off with? Is that a problem with privatizing, with the contract? Okay, I think that's probably it for now, John. And thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, let me answer that real quickly. The example I gave of the additional $1 million cost, that was with the county, and it was with our security department. It would have cost a million dollars more than what we're currently paying to privatize them. Now, with respect to requiring the private sector to hire your employees, usually what I see is you can do that, they usually accept the year, and then after a year, then what they do is they reduce then the employee down to whatever wage they want to pay.
Right. And so what supervisors voted in favor to privatize that security system out there? I'm just curious.
It was Supervisor Pachigian, Larson, and Case.
Okay. Did they realize at the time that it would cost the county an extra million bucks?
You know, they did. And that's what they...
And they still wanted it?
Yeah, that's what struck me. And of course, we're in public session, we're in debate, you know, the debate is on tape.
Yeah.
We just, I just couldn't understand the lodge ban, other than just being able to say, I privatized something. Well, like I said earlier, we have $93 million of programs within the county that we have already privatized. That makes sense. And I'm okay with doing that. But you got to play out the economics before you make those kinds of decisions.
Yeah, okay. Good morning, you're on Connect With Me. How are you? Hello? Oops, lost the phone call. Yeah, we're talking about Measure O. And if Measure O passes, I know it's flying kind of under the radar right now. There isn't too much talk about it. There has been a little sporadic publicity in the Bee regarding Measure O that would allow the Fresno County supervisors to just pass a majority vote on privatizing certain services in Fresno County. Let's take another phone call. Good morning, you're on Connect With Me. Quickly, what's your question?
Yeah, I'd like to know, these two members there for this vote, do they have any real ties to the private sector? I mean, are they looking at long-term future for themselves?
You mean, have they accepted money from private firms to vote a certain way or what?
No, no. You know, I mean, it seems like, I know one of them has something to do with the plenty of cement placed down there by the river. I know that. I mean...
Yeah, in this case, I don't think so. I mean, I have to rely on the fact that when these issues come before us, every supervisor, if they have a conflict, they will conflict out of a vote.
Yeah.
But, no, I don't think so. I think it's just some folks think that privatizing is a good idea. And in some cases, it may make sense, but it has to make fiscal sense.
How is the...
Okay, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, thank you for the call. I appreciate it. How is the makeup of the board going to change when Andreas Borges comes on in January?
Well, I mean, if we look at this issue in a political context, there's four Republicans on the board now, one Democrat, that would be me. And when Mr. Borges comes on board, there'll be four Republicans on the board, so it just...
It'll be four against one.
Four against one, if we want to put in that context. And when you look at the $100,000 it cost the county taxpayers to put this measure on the ballot, it just doesn't make any sense to me. Because when you have another Republican coming on board in January, it seems you're going to have all the votes, you need to do whatever you want. So why waste $100,000 of taxpayer dollars?
Yeah, good, good point. Good morning, you're on Connect With Me. How are you?
All right.
Good. Quick question.
Yes, I want to know, how come there's such a big rush to privatize everything? Is it going to stop? Or is it going to continue until the whole city's privatized, county privatized? How far is this going to go?
Good question.
That's a great question, and I think it depends on those people that are elected to office and what their philosophies are. You know, I think there are some people who, regardless of what the costs are, think it's a great idea to privatize. I think it has to make economic sense. So I think times will tell them. And there's some people who think it is a good idea and...
What about putting this to a vote, to the public? You know, every time, I know Measure O is going to go to the public, but what about these other issues like garbage for the city or other issues that come up with Fresno County? If Measure O passes and they want to privatize a service, like say over at the courthouse, why can't they have the voters decide instead of the supervisors or the council members?
Well, you know, that's always a question that comes up in debate. But, you know, I think there's just some things where, I mean, that's why the people vote in people to office, to do the deeper dive, the deeper studies, to make those types of decisions for them. But in a case like garbage in the city, there's going to be Prop 218 challenges because it really is raising a tax on the consumer, and the consumer should weigh in on that.
Yeah, it seems like it's rating the trust fund almost. Anyway, we got another phone call. Good morning, you're on Connect With Me. How are you? Whoops, lost them there. So in the city with the garbage, it almost seems like a money grab because the city is so far behind in, you know, there's so much in debt, like $5 million the next fiscal year. Seemed that way to you?
Oh, yeah, it does. And you're just reading today's paper when their councilman brand, I think, is saying that the city is near bankruptcy again. I don't know if that's a good thing to be saying because the credit ratings take a look at those things and then they affect even more, so it's tough.
Quickly, where do we stand with the jail situation now?
Well, we opened up another floor of the jail. Unfortunately, we are still in the jail release mode, prisoner release mode.
Right, they're still coming out, aren't they?
Yes, I'm sorry, excuse me. Yes, they're still coming out of the jail. So I had an item before the board two weeks ago where we're going to now be looking at contracting with other jails around the state to take our prisoners so that we're not releasing here in town. So, you know, a lot of different creative things we're trying to do to keep folks in jail. And here's a great example, contracting out. I'm okay with contracting out with other jails.
Okay. Are they releasing as many as they were a couple of years ago?
You know, the trend is picking up again. Unfortunately, just in the last month and a half, we've probably released close to 2,000 prisoners out of that jail again, and that's not good for public safety.
All right. Three strikes is going to be on the ballot as a proposition. What's your stance on that? How do you view that? They want to change it?
Yeah. You know, I think the change that they want to make is a good change because I think what's happened in some cases is, we've had our state prisoners filled up with three strikers who committed minimal crimes, if you want to put in that context of a felony, that end up taking up a bed space or someone who may be more of a serious felon. So I think this is a tweak that makes sense. And I think at the end of the day, we're still going to have the ability to put the bad guys, the seriously bad guys, in state prison, which is where they belong.
Well, let's hope this jail release thing comes to an end here pretty soon because it's very alarming and not good for Fresno, not good for Fresno County, and certainly not good for our city.
I agree.
Quickly, we got about 30 seconds. SPCA update on the county side.
Things are looking good. We're doing a great operation. Liberty Animal Control is doing everything that they committed to do. The rescue community has...
No problems with Liberty so far?
No problems. And the rescue community stepped up and they're helping us rescue dogs, so it's just, it's a win-win all the way around.
You think it's going to turn out okay?
I think it will. And we're saving the taxpayers $250,000. We were paying the SPCA $1 million. We're now paying $750,000. So it was a good deal.
Okay. Henry Perea, sadly, we're out of time. It does go by quick.
It does.
But at least we got a lot in today and quite a few phone calls. Come back anytime.
Thank you, John. Yeah, I mean, I'll invite Debbie Pachigian. We'll come back and debate in the next two weeks if she's willing.
Okay. All right. Henry Perea, one of the good guys. He's a Fresno County Board of Supervisor. Hey, tomorrow, we're going to be debating the Fresno school board situation. We've got two or three, I think, coming in here to debate on the Fresno Unified School Board. (265) 4331 is the number. We'll see you back here tomorrow. Have a good one.